Present in this visual hearing. But let me also appreciate our heavenly father for saving us from this pandemic. Most of our beloved brothers and sisters lost their lives because of this Covid nineteen. My name is Miliyon Makaringe, the Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Agriculture, Rural Development and Environmental Affairs. There is Mpumalanga Provincial Legislature. We are pleased to continue involving and encouraging the people of Mpumalanga to participate in the process of lawmaking. So we'll move to item number two. This will be introduction. I would like to invite honourable members to introduce themselves.
Honourable Chairperson, good morning. Honourable members, my name is J K Skosana, a member of this committee. Thank you.
Good morning Chairperson, good morning colleagues, it's Bosman Kruber, also a member of the committee.
Good morning Chairperson, I'm Bernard Weber, a member of this committee.
Morning Chairperson, I'm Honourable Mkavela, member of this committee.
Now, thank you. Let me also acknowledge all the stakeholders present in this meeting. We'll then move to the purpose of this public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide information to the public on the draft norms and standards for the trophy hunting of leopard in South Africa. The norms and standards for the trophy hunting of leopard in South Africa were developed and published in the Gazette for Public Participation on the Eighth of February twenty seventeen, tabled by the Minister of Environment for S P S T A R I S in terms of section nine one A of the National Environmental Management Biodiversity Act two thousand and four. Act number eight, three of number. This number is a legislation which affects provinces. The norms and standards were referred to Mpumalanga Provincial Legislature to the Patrol Committee on Agriculture, Rural Development, Land and Environmental Affairs. As the committee issued invitations to stakeholders, adverts were published on the Mpumalanga Legislative Social Media Platform, Mpumalanga Print, Provincial Media, Mpumalanga Press, Lowfeld Media, Lowfeld and Mpumalanga News. News One and Electronic Media within the three districts, namely S A P C Radio Station, the Guala Guala F M, Igbo Gwoi's F M and Community Radio Station, namely Ushbagreish Community Radio, Mpumazee F M, Mesh F M, Voice of the People. Today, the committee is facilitating a visual public hearing to enable the members of the public and all affected stakeholders in Mpumalanga Province to make oral submissions. However, written submission can be made by Tuesday, the ninth of February twenty twenty before sixteen hours. So I will hand over to the National Department of Environment for S P S T A R I S briefly present on the norms and standards. After stakeholders will be given an opportunity to ask questions and make their input or contribution. We'll invite Mrs. Bocho.
Thank you Honourable Chair and good morning Chair Honourable Members and guests of the Mpumalanga Legislature. Thank you very much for this opportunity. If you give me a second or two, I'll do the share of the screen from my side. I just want to share quickly. Can I just see if the presentation is visible from your side? Okay, thank you Chair. Then without further ado, let me continue. You already indicated here what is the purpose of the presentation and that's to provide information to the public affected in Mpumalanga on the draft norms and standards for the trophy hunting of leopard in South Africa. And these draft norms and standards were available in terms of section nine of the National Environment Management Biodiversity Act or number. And that's generally norms and standards for the management of diversity and other purposes as well. What I want to touch on during the presentation, it's a brief introduction, just some general information on leopard populations. That will also provide a little bit of background in understanding a number of the provisions contained in the draft norms and standards. And then I want to reflect on some of the key provisions in the norms and standards and just to provide an indication of what specific problem it is addressing and then just indicating the way forward, what happens after today from the departmental side. And then to look at the introduction. First of all, leopards are regarded, most of the information, some of the information will be familiar for many people, if not everybody. But I will be providing it anyway because I want to make linkages between this and the relevance of the norms and standards. And especially where I've highlighted something, it's directly linked to the process of the norms and standards or what we want to achieve by having the norms and standards in place. So first of all, leopard are long-lived animals with a low reproductive rate. And with that, we basically mean that if we compare them to rats, for example, leopards produce, the females normally have two cubs. They have a relatively low survival rate, most of the time one or both do not survive. And there's also a relatively long period of dependency of the cubs on the mothers. So it does take a relatively long time to replace a reproductive unit once that productive unit or producing female is taken out of the population. It takes a relatively long time to replace that female at the place where she is able to reproduce. Compared to rats and rabbits that can breed very quickly and they produce in very high numbers. Leopard occur in a wide variety of habitats and different climate conditions in South Africa. They occupy approximately or approximately twenty percent of the habitat in South Africa suitable, but it is very fragmented. And that's primarily based or due to agricultural development and human encroachment. So because of that, we don't really have a lot of information on the connectivity because the habitats are fragmented. We don't really have a lot of information on the connectivity between the separate leopard population. Whether they are able to connect to, whether there's flow from one population to the other, to what extent. So the fact that the habitat is fragmented is problematic. They do occur in many of the provinces, for example, in Western Cape, in the far mountainous areas, parts of northwest and in Limpopo in Mpumalanga, Kuzulu Natal and Eastern Cape. Gauteng doesn't have a population of its own, but it does border northwest in an area and Mpumalanga in an area. So it is possible that there's a population or a leopard occurring that's moving across the provincial borders and might move into Gauteng, but Gauteng on its own doesn't have its own population that occurs only in Gauteng. Then leopards are sensitive for human disturbance, so they do tend to move away. Or unless there's nowhere else for them to move, they do result in human wildlife conflict. And then also until recently, we didn't really have any reliable estimates on population trends. Meaning whether populations are increasing or decreasing, so we didn't really have information on that. And because it's very difficult to determine how many populations we have, we basically didn't have information on the leopard population. But later in the presentation, that changed recently and I'll provide information on what was done and what do we have now. The scientific authority, we have a scientific authority in South Africa and that is an authority that was appointed by the minister in terms of number. And the functions of the scientific authorities is specified in numbers, so they have a very specific set of functions that they must do. I just quickly want to provide background on what the scientific authority consists of. It's represented by all the provincial conservation authorities, they are scientists from each of the provinces, as well as from Sandy, the South African National Biodiversity Institute, Sandparks, for example, now the Zoological Garden. And we are expanding the representativity with other organs of state as well. Generally, it's a state entity comprised of. One of the functions of the scientific authority is to make a non-detriment finding. And that basically means the scientific authority must determine whether international trade has a negative impact or detrimental impact on the survival of a species in the wild. Now, the scientific authority did a provisional non-detriment finding for leopard. And what they highlighted in that non-detriment finding, the key threats to the leopard population. There's a number of them. I mentioned habitat loss or habitat fragmentation. There's also excessive legal and illegal offtake of damage causing leopards. So some of them are just hunted or killed and there's no reporting on that. And in a number of cases, there are also illegal offtakes with permits. But jointly, the offtake of damage causing animals, of damage causing leopard do have an impact on the population. And then also poorly managed trophy hunting. So it's not saying that trophy hunting per se has a negative impact, but the way in which we have has a negative impact. And I highlighted that particular part because the purpose of the norms and standards in the presentation today is to look at how do we intend to address that particular threat through the norms and standards. There's also other threats that are dealt with through other mechanisms, illegal trade in leopard skins for cultural and religious purposes, incidental smearing, snares are said for something else and then accidentally a leopard may be caught in it. And also due to unethical radio collars for research and tourism purposes. And then lastly, to address the threat that the scientific authority highlighted, specifically with relevance to trophy hunting, the scientific authority made a few recommendations in that non-detriment finding. First of all, they recommended a zero quota for two thousand and sixteen for trophy hunting. So in that particular year, we couldn't allocate any quotas for the trophy hunting of leopard. And they also proposed the development of guidelines for the allocation of leopard hunting quotas. So how do we determine how many quotas can be used for hunting and how do we allocate it? So there were guidelines needed for a streamlined process for that. And then also the implementation of other urgent measures to facilitate sustainable use of leopard because we're not anti-sustainable use, but we need to know how do we use it so that it remains sustainable. And one of those measures would be norms and standards for the management and monitoring of leopards. So those norms and standards were the ones that we developed and published for public participation in two thousand and seventeen. And it specifically relates to the management of trophy hunting. And then I mentioned that until recently, we didn't have reliable population trend estimate, whether populations are increasing or decreasing. And in two thousand and sixteen, as one of the measures to address the threats to the population, a national leopard monitoring program was implemented. It was initially driven by Pantera, but it has expanded quite a lot and it's now done in conjunction with most of the provincial conservation authorities and also private initiatives. The wildlife sector is involved in it and there's also private NGOs other than Pantera that's also participating to the program. So the data that is coming from this monitoring program will be the data or that is the data that we are using to or that is used by the scientific authority to make recommendations on leopard hunting quotas. So that's why I say that until recently, we didn't have reliable estimates, but since we've implemented or since the implementation of the monitoring program, we started getting in data that indicates some of the populations are declining, some of them are stable or some of them may be increasing. So then if we look at the requirements for hunting trophies, it's contained in the norms and standards. I'm not going to go through the whole norms and standards document, but I wanted to touch on some of the key elements that address or that speak to certain problems or challenges that we're having. Now, one of the main challenges was that there was an uneven distribution of hunting. So meaning that in some areas where there are populations, there were hardly any hunting and maybe in some other areas where there were leopards, there were many of the hunting incidences were taking place in the same area. So it wasn't evenly distributed throughout the country. So to address that, the scientific authority, so the norms and standards determine that the scientific authority must determine leopard hunting zones. Now Chair, here I just want to highlight my apologies in the presentation I sent yesterday. It indicates Sandy and I picked up that anomaly and I corrected it in this presentation. So it's required that the scientific authority must determine the leopard hunting zones, not Sandy. Now, the leopard hunting zones are demarcated areas where there are leopard hunting populations. And those zones, the quotas will be allocated to those zones, one quota per zone. And that will then ensure that we hunt leopard evenly or the hunting of leopard is evenly distributed. And not many leopards in one area and no leopards in another area. Then the high impact of trophy hunting on the stability of the leopard population, the impact that it actually has on the ability of the leopard population to recover. The hunting quotas will be allocated in leopard hunting zones only where there are leopard in those zones. And where the leopard population in that particular leopard hunting zone is stable to increasing over the past three years. And this is very important because that's why there was a zero quota for two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen to allow for the accumulation of hunting, of monitoring data over three seasons. So only in a leopard hunting zone where a leopard population is stable or increasing monitored over a period of three years, then a quota can be allocated in that particular leopard hunting zone. But then per leopard hunting zone or per demarcated area, only one leopard per hunting season. And that's generally a season going from January to December of the same year. Only one leopard in that particular leopard hunting zone can be hunted. And that one leopard may only be a male that is seven years or older. And the specific reason why at seven years or older, there was a lot of debate and different views whether we should make it younger and there is a way to address it that I will come to later. But the specific reason why it should be seven years and older, not younger is that that is more or less the time that it takes for a male leopard. By the time that they are about five, they start establishing their territories and they start populating, or not populating, my apologies, they start mating and produce offspring. And the offspring is old enough to survive fanticide. That's where the age of seven years come from. So that means by that age, the male has positively contributed to the leopard population. And fantasize, what I mean with that is that when there's a new male coming into the territory and there are cubs, the new male then to kill them to ensure that his genes are carried forward into that population. So for males to be, male cubs to be old enough to survive that phenomenon, that's been round about the age of seven where a male leopard has contributed to the population. And then if a female or a sub-adult male, a male below the age of seven, has been hunted in a particular leopard hunting zone, we do acknowledge that it can accidentally happen. Then for that particular hunting zone may not receive a hunting quota for the next hunting season to allow that population found to recover. And then the ability to assess the age of a male because this is relatively new territory. It's the first time that we start regulating this kind of requirements. So to make it easier and to assist in the ability of a hunter, whether that's a local hunter or hunting client that hunts with his professional hunter, to assist them to increase or improve the ability to assess the age of the male leopard, there is a few, there are a few provisions in the norms and standards. There's an online examination to be conducted by the local hunter or the professional hunter in the case of a hunting client. And that must be done in the presence of a nature conservation official. Now, that program for online assessment is already running and ongoing. So there are lots of opportunities for persons who want to do the exam, to use that program, to practice, to see many different pictures or different pictures. And it's a random selection of pictures. So there's a range of pictures available. So for the day that the person does the exam, there may be pictures that he has seen, there may be pictures that the person has not seen yet. What we will also do is make available a picture or a pamphlet together with the hunting permit that will contain the pictures, the different pictures to indicate the features or the characteristics that need to be considered when assessing the age. And we will also assist with the establishment of a panel of experts that can assist with evaluating the photographs. Now that can be made available by a WhatsApp group online. So that's another mechanism that we will be putting in place. Then the determination of a hunting quotas for any particular hunting season. So say for example, it's now for next year, the data of hunts that took place and the monitoring data of the previous year will be used. So the information that will be required for the determination of a hunting quotas of the next hunting season, there's a number of provisions that we've included relating to that. So immediately after the hunt, a successful hunt, the hunter must inform an environmental management inspector from the relevant, either the relevant management authority in that province where the hunt took place or maybe an E M I from another province or it may even be an E M I from the national department. So we make sure that we share resources because we do acknowledge that capacity in provinces are not always adequate. But for that person or that inspector to do an inspection immediately or within twelve hours after the hunt, or sorry, within twenty-four hours after the hunt on the property where the hunt took place and then the trophy can be released to go to the taxi dermis. But there must be an inspection done of the trophy immediately after it's successful hunt. Then also there is a responsibility and that the hunter must submit a hunting return. Whether the hunt is successful or not, a hunting return must be submitted. So it must be submitted, if it's a successful hunt, information must be submitted to the relevant issuing authority within twelve hours after the hunt before the inspection takes place. And there's certain measurements that must be taken, that's provided in the norms and standards, what are the specific measurements? And also a clear photographs of certain aspects of the hunting trophy. And then if it's an unsuccessful hunt, and also if it's the female or a sub-adult male that was hunted, that information must also be provided because that information needs to be used for deciding on allocating the quotas for the next year or not. And then in the case of an unsuccessful hunt, a hunting return must be submitted, but that can be done fourteen, within fourteen days after the hunt. And then when the environmental management inspector is doing the inspection, he or she must also collect DNA samples for analysis. And that can be used to provide additional information relating to the leopard population. So it's just an additional, additional opportunity to make use of information that can provide or opportunity that can provide other information. And then on the way forward, where do we go from here? Because nature conservation, what I want to highlight, why this process is followed of the tabling of the norms and standards with the National Council of Provinces and the provincial legislators processes. It's because nature conservation is a competence and it's determined by schedule four of the constitution of the Republic of South Africa. And that basically means that the national minister and the provincial M E Cs have the legislative mandate to make and implement legislation relating to biodiversity. And because that situation arises where national provincial legislation exists, there is a potential for conflict between national provincial legislation. So to resolve that conflict, the constitution makes provision for the resolution of that conflict. So when we submit the national legislation, subordinate legislation to the N C O P for approval, we submit that in terms of section one forty-six of the constitution. So in the case where conflict do arise, that we may not have anticipated and it's approved by the N C O P, then the constitution determines that the national provisions will prevail over the provincial provisions. It doesn't replace or repeal provincial legislation, the provision just takes precedence over the provincial requirement. And then when this whole N C O P approval process is concluded and the N C O P approves the norms and standards, we will be publishing it for implementation in the Gazette and we will use different platforms to communicate that information. Normally, we do publish it on the departmental website, we communicate through the Wildlife Forum and other structures that we have. And we also, most of the time, we also publish it in the newspaper. Especially if it's new, if it's new legislation, then we go wider to make an effort to make it available and to communicate that this is now in force and that it's in place. Yeah, that's all from my side. I will stand by for any questions from the floor. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Michael Bocho for the presentation. It was straight into the point. I believe all the stakeholders were listening to the presentation. Now I'm inviting comments from the stakeholders. I've got a list of stakeholders, but because I'm not sure who is present, who is not present. Let me just open it, the stakeholder that is ready, okay, there is a list that is appearing. In the years, in the years, white life trust, are you available?
Yes Chair, good morning.
Yes, take the platform.
Thank you very much Chair.
We will follow all the stakeholders as the list appears in front of us.
Thank you Chair. Good morning everybody.
Interjection, Chairperson.
Honourable Chair. Chairperson, I'm just checking time allocated for every each presenter. Was it, it seems it is just opened and there are some other commitments that we must attend governmentally. And otherwise, can I just get timeframe for any presenter? Can you allocate the time please?
What are you suggesting? How many minutes?
Now, if you can give a presenter ten minutes to present, then be fine. Or you can say five minutes or whatever, just check your time.
I think five minutes, I will only intervene if my maybe there are something important that the presenter might continue engaging with. But I believe all of us, we are cautious about time. We'll only deal with a very good aspect that want to make sure that it is part of the norms and standard. Dr. David.
Chair, good morning. My name is Ashley and I'll be presenting on behalf of the E W T, but I am joined by my colleague, Dr. David Mills, who is manager of our conservation program.
I'll continue sir.
Thank you very much. Good morning everybody and thank you for the opportunity to engage on the norms and standards. We have been part of the process going back to two thousand and seventeen, so we have submitted comments previously. We did participate in the public participation process in two thousand and nineteen on the leopard quota. And welcome the opportunity to engage on this concept, on this, on this issue again. I think we'd like to first start off by saying that overall, the E W Ts really supports the approach taken towards adaptive management using scientific approaches to inform hunting. So the approach taken within the norms and standards is one that we support, as well as the norms and standards themselves. With that said, we are going to raise a couple of comments that we do hope will be taken into consideration to strengthen the norms and standards. These include, and we will draft these fully and submit comments by the deadline of Tuesday. But very, very briefly, these include the distinction between a quota and a permit. And these are not really clear, the process is not really clear in the norms and standards. We would recommend definitions be used and more guidance to the users on what process needs to take place first or if it's a joint application. The approved training for hunting clients and local hunters is not clear. So that should be strengthened about who can do the approved training. We would ask that more guidance on the process to determine the leopard hunting zone be included in the norms and standards as well. In the two thousand and seventeen norms and standards, there was a dedicated annex that detailed what was taken into consideration for a leopard hunting zone and that has been removed from the two thousand and twenty-one. detailed what was taken into consideration for a leopard hunting zone, and that has been removed from the 2021 norms and standards. So, we do feel it's important that more clarity and transparency around the creation of leopard hunting zones is provided for in the norms and standards. With regard to the process of EMIs in terms of Regulation Four, we would ask that prior notification be included as well. And following post notification, the period of twelve hours seems unjustifiably short. If we use the example that if a hunt were to take place at seven PM, if notification is needed in twelve hours, that means that the EMI would need to be notified by seven AM the next morning. So, consideration to the timeframes may need to be considered there. In terms of the assessment, it currently provides that the EMI must come through within twenty-four hours of the conclusion of the hunt to assess the trophy. And here, we feel it should be expressed that it's the carcass, not the trophy. So, the leopard carcass itself should not be processed in any way before the EMI does his assessment or her assessment. And this should be an express term within the norms and standards. The costs for the post-inspection should be borne by the client and that should be made clear. Currently, only the costs of the DNA is expressly for the client. And so, the cost of the post-inspection should also be borne by the client. At Regulation Five, the process of submitting reports and who is in control and responsible for the data should really be clarified. We would recommend creating a prescribed template for reporting so that it's very, very clear what is expected and there's uniformity in the information that's applied. And then, we would also ask that cross-referencing to prohibited hunting forms and offences should also be included in the norms and standards. We understand that references made to the TOPS regulations and NEMBA, but it should be expressed within the hunting or the trophy hunting norms and standards of what is a prohibited form of hunting to avoid some of the more illegal activities that occur here. And then, finally, we noted that the provisions around disincentives have been also removed. And I think that was from, it was Regulation 4.7 of the 2017 regulations have been removed in the 2021 regulations. And we are concerned about this. If we are trying to support voluntary disclosures on potential accidents that may happen, we need to ensure that the norms and standards cover both incentives for disclosing those and being broader in the disincentives where unlawful or other behaviour takes place. So, we do feel very strongly that the carrot and stick approach should be very clear within the norms and standards, and currently, it's not. So, that is an area that we would really urge government to strengthen. David, is there anything that you would like to raise in our remaining minutes?
No, I think they're not intended and done all good, and I think you outlined that point really, really well.
Great. Chair, with your permission, then, thank you very much from the Endangered Wildlife Trust. And I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Ashley Dohr, and I manage our Wildlife and Law Project. Thank you.
No, thank you, Ashley Dohr. I think we have done well in terms of time. And I also urge the other presenters, if what you want to raise has been raised by the first presenter, I think we need to omit it so that we save time. Then, we'll move to presenter number two, Kruger National Park, Sandparks. Who is representing Sandparks? Take the platform.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is Richard Sari here, representing Sandparks. I see my colleague, Ms. Charlotte Nkouna, is also down for representation. I don't know if you'd like to go first? Now, Charlotte, are you there? Now, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. I think she's not there, so I will just present. Firstly, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity. All that the EWT has expressed, for the sake of saving time, I won't repeat, we concur. I support all they have said. I just have two separate issues to raise. We, this recent last year, the last few months of the last year, there were a few permits issued. We did run into issues with the time period available for the hunt to take place. We do need to ensure that when permits are issued, that we allocate a full year for the conclusion of the hunt. The importance of this is twofold. One is that shortening the period just means less time for good decision-making about the right individual to harvest. Secondly, it also reduces one's ability to generate the appropriate revenue from the leopard harvested, which then obviously rolls out into benefit for society and wildlife and the rest of that. So, those are really the only two issues other than what the EWT has raised. Other than that, I'd like to commend you on the job done on the norms and standards. It does justice to our approach to conservation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll just go straight because of time to presenter number three. In terms of the list, this National SPCA Wildlife Protective Unit. If it is not available, we'll go step to presenter number four, Human Society International.
Chairperson?
Yes.
It's Charlotte, the NSPCA, they are available. Thanks, Chair.
SPCA. Can you make your input? Take their connectivity, Charlotte. Yes.
Thank you so much, Chair. I'm just gonna jump right in for some questions for Markel. And we will be doing a written submission. The public participation. Yes.
Head on.
The public participation process. We just wanna find
Chair, we can't hear what she's saying. I think there's disruptions on her side. Maybe if she can try to make her voice a little clearer.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, you are audible now.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump right in. I just have a few questions for Markel. For the public participation process, I just wanna find out why is the turnaround time for submission so short for Tuesday and not thirty days as per Section Hundred of NEMBA? The other question that we have that only males that are seven years and older are allowed for trophy hunting, but there aren't any clear-cut consequences or implications or fines for those that do hunt leopards that are younger than seven years, males or females. It doesn't really incentivize or hold any clear-cut consequences to try and mitigate or to prevent leopards that are younger than seven years, males and females, to be hunted. So, just if that can be included and be more clear-cut in the norms and standards. And then, also, what happens to those trophies if it's not a male that is seven years and older? And then, the last question that we have from the NSPCA. I know the draft norms and standards were issued in 2017. And then, the NSPCA had a court ruling back in 2019 of which reference was made that animal welfare needs to be included in conservation matters in terms of Section Three of NEMBA in terms of biodiversity management and conservation and sustainable use of South Africa's natural resources. So, we just wanna find out, are you gonna include welfare into the draft norms and standards as that is yet to be gazetted and we are past the 2019 court ruling? Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Let me also thank all the presenters. I think they are doing well in terms of time. And I will appreciate the others that still has to present to do it again. We'll go to Human Society International.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you, Chair. My name is Audrey Dalston. I'm the Wildlife Director for Human Society International. I concur with the National NSPCA. And similarly to the EWT, we have made previous submissions as far back as 2017. And we will be making a written submission and we will append our comments in our previous submissions to there too. Again, a question directed at Markel. Markel, you had made reference that you had recent population data which has changed your position in terms of the quotas, et cetera. I just had a query with reference to that because in terms of the focus group for the terms of reference and for the HLP, it was actually stated in those terms of reference themselves that there was no consensus in terms of the population status and that, in fact, there was no evidence to suggest that the leopard status has actually remained stable. So, I'm just curious to know what population change there has been specifically with regards to South Africa. And furthermore, there have actually been papers by Baum and Pitman and Trobus that actually demonstrate a negative consequence for trophy hunting of leopards specifically in South Africa and in general. So, the concern is that with the effect of not having stable populations and, of course, with your own admission, with low reproductive rates, highly susceptible to anthropogenic effects and poor connectivity, it's just a concern why a more precautionary approach, you know, is not opted for. So, your response there too would be appreciated. I think in the interest of time, I'll leave it at that. And we will, as I say, follow up with additional comments for the written submission for next week. Thank you.
Chairperson, we're losing your voice. Can you come back? Yes, 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 yes. We are going to allow FASA to make presentation, but there is a list of people that are attending this meeting. I believe they know who is going to present on behalf of the professional hunters of Association of South Africans. They can take the platform. One who is dedicated to make presentation from the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Tony De Bruyne. I'm the Chairperson of the FASA Foundation. We concur with Ashley as well as Richard's ideas that they just gave to us. We will give written submission as with all the other organizations. All I just wanted to bring to your attention is that FASA has written a norms and standards for large predator hunting throughout South Africa, and we already submitted it to the High Level Panel last year as well as that FASA's foundation has started research throughout South Africa. And we have completed now thirteen areas in South Africa in the Limpopo Province with our own scientists. You will see Mariska Nell and Anika Von Ammerweil is representing us there. And Mariska also helps us with all the scientific authority. So, we will be sending out our peer previews within a few weeks with our report back to Sandby, with our research that we have done. So, we wanna thank you for the opportunity to represent ourselves here. And we wanna congratulate you with your norms and standards, and we're looking forward to work with you in the future. Thank you so much, sir.
No, thank you, De Bruyne. We'll go to presenter, Rama Bai Safaris. Rama Bai Safaris.
One. We would just like to thank FASA and everyone for their hard work to present this research. And we're looking forward to the way forward for leopard hunting in South Africa. We have no further comments to add. We're just listening in and we appreciate all the hard work that everyone has done.
Oh, thank you. Lowfeld Media.
Chairperson, it's Charlotte. Lowfeld Media is represented by Lynn that she has indicated that they do not have any submission presently. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Africa Geographic. Africa Geographic. Yeah, it means they are not available. Let me also invite other stakeholders that were not indicated on my list. If they are still there, we don't want to leave any stakeholder without contributing to the standard. Charlotte, is there any indication of any stakeholders who are without making presentation?
Chairperson, we have received submissions and questions from other stakeholders who are participating via our Facebook page. We have forwarded those questions to Markel. She will touch on them when she's responding. Thank you, Chairperson.
No, thanks. I just wanted to check if there is any stakeholder that I did not give them a chance to make presentation with those that have submitted. I think the representative from the department will touch on them. Is there any other stakeholder present which I did not give them a chance to make presentation? Okay.
Chairperson?
Chair, sorry.
There is a hand.
Can you introduce yourself and make presentation?
Will do. I'm Yohan Ekstein. I'm with Scientific Services of the MTPI. We just have a few comments. Just the background to leopard management in our province. In the past, we used to issue hunting permits according to areas where there was complaints about leopard damage to livestock and game and so forth. And by doing that, we had a bit substantial buy-in from the landowners who supported then leopard conservation. Okay, that changed around 2016 when the new monitoring and hunting approach was being followed. And initially, the strong role that was played by an NGO or Ponteira was not appreciated by the landowners. So, what we have now is, because it's the approach is now away from damage-causing animals, I think we've lost substantial buy-in from the from the the livestock and game owners and that includes um also previously disadvantaged successful land claimants. Um so that's the background. Just getting into the some corrections, um okay, I mentioned that the section three point two with the scientific authority establish a leopard hunting zone. Um okay, just some background. We that's basically determined by where the the provinces do uh leopard monitoring. So uh but then to get your monitoring approved, that's also another another story. It's quite expensive and.
So sorry, uh so 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 sorry, the presenter. Uh obviously, I was uh coming to put you to a response uh to the presentation because you are going to also respond to the question that we raised before the department. So we will utilize this time maybe uh to respond in some of the questions that we raised, which must be responded by MTPA. Carry on.
Okay, I'm sorry. This just so so I'm just giving background. What I've done now is just give background to the uh interaction with the landowners. Um I think what whether it would be good if the the guidelines for aging of leopard is is better communicated. I think some of the other presenters already referred to that, so I'll skip that a bit. Uh then I just want to confirm in section three point ten and point twelve where the wording is for the one is minimum size of hunting area may be specified. Does that mean uh it can differ between provinces? And then the same for number twelve where there's also the word uh way being used. Um good, the okay, then there's in in section four two um where there's a reference to hunting without disruption of the affected population. We'd just like some better guidelines on that. Um because most of those things will only happen after the hunt, so some guidelines there would be appreciated. Um okay, with respect to the the inspection of carcasses, I think in Mpumalanga, we will probably be able to to stick to those timeframes. Uh we are lucky. We're a smaller province than some some others. Um okay, with respect to the hunters being responsible to the cost for DNA, okay, there's different opinions. Most hunters are willing to do it because they feel they contribute to research. Um but there's also some people saying that then it becomes their property and the other guys can't use it for for research. I'm just mentioning it, but most of the guys actually support it. Then with the section five and specifically the the reference to the different images to be taken. Uh section two and then small one um where there's a reference to a side view of a of of the leopard with the hunter positions directly behind for scale. Um okay, that statement doesn't make sense because if the hunter is six foot six and obese and the other hunter is five foot five and skinny, there's a very different interpretation there. So we propose something a fixed uh distance to be used, like putting a yardstick there or measuring tape that's at a at set at one meter because this photograph will will not will not make sense for scale. And it also creates a problem for the hunting client if if you distribute those photos. Um okay, a lot of the other stuff we can submit via via the um the sort of the written submissions. Okay, except for one thing, there's also a question about the accuracy of the the identification of of seven-year-old males. Um because we've got good information of much younger animals with some similar characteristics. So we guess that should be used as guidelines. Okay, that is our input in short.
Uh thank thank you. I believe uh uh we have given all the stakeholders it tends to think on the norms and standards. Uh I will then uh invite honorable members to make comment. Honorable members, then it's your platform.
Chairperson, I'm got nothing to add. Thank you.
Chairperson, I'm also I'm also captain. Thank you very much for all the input by the stakeholders and by Machtel as well.
Chairperson is Honorable Cavella. I'm also covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, honorable, that's me, Rain. Uh Chair, I think we should rather stick on what we know in our own capacity and within our own knowledge. But from the presentation that we saw, uh it was everything is in order. Safe to say that maybe we must request stakeholders uh written responses to be submitted. Um um so we have a proper record of the submissions made by them. And also to maybe get an update from the stakeholders that we're not present. Um but in all other respects, I'm covered. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you very much, uh honorable Chairperson and honorable members and our stakeholders. Chair, I I'm really happy and covered about the input made by our honorable members and the stakeholders in their presentations. But what is fundamentally there is the management and monitoring of the implementation of norms and standards. After we've concluded the whole process, I should think that the department where it must assist us most will make sure that the implementation is running smooth and the law enforcement is doing its work as supposed to do. And all in all, we must thank the national to come and present before us here, Chairperson. Thank you very much.
Uh thank you, uh honorable members. Then I will invite uh a representative from the National Department, Magdalene Boshov, to respond in some of the questions that we raised that need an immediate uh response. But safe to say that we we are inviting all the stakeholders to make those written submissions to to the department uh with the email number of Charlotte C. at pulig.gov. Uh Mrs. Boshov.
Thank you, honorable Chair. Yes, I'm available to make notes of all the questions asked. Um um these very valuable inputs that we will take note of. I'm going to start in the same order, respond to the questions in the same order that um the comments have been made and questions asked. The first one first one is um Ashley's comment from EWT. There's a number of um areas that were highlighted. Um what I want, and I'm not going to repeat all of the comments um or the inputs that 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 um Ashley made. What I want to highlight there is that um many of those proposals relate to processes that we specifically do not want to put in the norms and standards itself. And and I'm going to explain why, and I think that will also touch on another question that was asked on the penalties and offenses and what are the um recourse is if someone do does hunt a female or a sub-adult male. Um I'm not sure if it's always understood that the norms and standards, when we publish it in terms of NEMBA, it becomes a regulatory tool, so it becomes part of the legislation. Um and especially for a species that are listed in terms of members threatened or protected. Um the norms and standards are enforceable. So if anybody does something that is in conflict with a requirement or a prohibition in the norms and standards, it is a punishable 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 offense. Um we don't say that um it's an offense and this is the penalty in the norms and standards um itself. The offense um at the moment, we are remending NEMBA to make it a much more explicit offense. If you if someone does not comply with the provision of the norms and standards, it will be an offense. But at the moment, how it links to NEMBA and and um um offenses um is that there is a provision in the Threat No Protected Species Regulations, the TOPF regulations, that every permit that is issued for a threat no protected species, in this case, say, for example, the hunting of a leopard. Um if a permit is issued, it must contain a compulsory condition and that is prescribed in the TOPF regulations. The permit must be issued with a condition, um a permit condition that holds the holder of the permit a bound that person to any provisions um of applicable norms and standards. Now that becomes a permit condition and in the templates that we have provided for permits, it's already that included as as a standard permit condition. Now, the moment when a person, say, for example, the norms and standards require that only a seven-year-old male may be hunted and now someone hunts a female arguments like or a three-year-old um sub-adult or um 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 male. The contravention will be non-compliance with a permit condition. And that non-compliance with a permit condition, that is the penal punishable offense in NEMBA. And NEMBA prescribed or NEMBA provides what is the maximum penalty, um the ten-year um ma- uh ten-year imprisonment um not exceeding ten years or a fine not exceeding ten million or um both. So the penalties and the offenses and the penalties are there, but they need to be read with NEMBA. So we don't repeat them in the norms and standards. Um now that is that answers one question, but you come back to the fact that many of Ashley's proposals relate to processes. Because the norms and standards become a regulatory tool, a legislative document. We don't want to put procedures in the in the norms and standards. Those issues will be addressed, except maybe the twelve hours um notification um for the inspection and the twenty-four hours for the inspection to be done. Um but the other processes or procedures will be prescribed and who will be resp- uh not prescribed in the regulations, but there will be processes on who's responsible for the data, um the training, um the 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 training to be done is not clear in the norms and standards. Those issues are in place. But the moment that we put it in the norms and standards and we feel or we we realize that a procedure is no longer working, we need to adapt the procedure because of unforeseen circumstances. If the if the procedure is set in the norms and standards, we have to follow a formal amendment process to be able to change it. Because in changing a procedure, it might affect stakeholders, so we have to do a consultation process. And that is what we want to avoid. So we want to be able to change procedures relatively quickly and easy as we experience the challenges. Um I do understand that there needs to be a distinction between a quota and a permit and the process when what um needs to be happening, why. That's something that we can provide um in guidelines and we do have the Threat No Protected Species Guidelines. So if there are questions coming up about procedures or interpretations that are not clear, we use the guidelines to update it and we don't put all of that detailed information in a regulatory document. Um just to use an example, initially we said that um um request for hunting quotas must be submitted before September of each year to determine the quota for the next year. Now, that is not always practical, so we we took the date out. Um and we just said uh must be submitted by a time determined by the issuing authority. So we prefer to deal with processes outside of the regulatory document, um but the information will be available. So if there's at any stage information that's not clear, we can provide that or we can update the guidelines or uh protocols that we do have. Um I think this is those. I'll touch on coming back to because there's a question that Mpumalanga MTPI also asked relating to clarity in the norms and standards. I'll come back to that one. Then um the the comment that that Richard from Sandparks make in terms of need that we need to make sure that we allocate a full um a a a full hunting season for using the allocated quotas. That is a process at the moment that we do have challenges with. Um and between Sandby and the scientific authority and the provinces, uh we do, we acknowledge that we do have to improve that process. Um so be- because it is, we agree, it is not um fair practice to allow only two or three months um of a hunting season for trophy hunting. So we do take note of that. Again, it's a procedure that we don't want to prescribe in the norms and standards, but it is something that we are busy um looking at and addressing. Then uh comments from the NSPCA. Um I think I also dealt with NSPCA, your question that um there are no clear uh consequences or fines for females or sub-adults that are hunted. Um I think I've explained that one. Your question on what will happen to those trophies. I just want to spend um a a few seconds here in terms of the process that we have agreed in during our intergovernmental processes. And it's also a comment that Johan from Mpumalanga Tourism Parks Agency made in terms of there are younger males that may have the same features as older males. We do acknowledge that and that's also why I said in the beginning in the in the um um presentation um that it is that it is easy to make a mistake. We do acknowledge that. So what we've agreed in terms of prosecutions um that we will put a procedure in place that and it's something that is reflected in the norms and standards, but not um the detail thereof. If a person hunts um a male leopard, um the initial proposal was a le- a male leopard between five and seven years. And eventually it was agreed by the provinces that we will continue with a period of a male between six and seven years. We ask um relatively difficult to make a distinction between a a younger leopard of between six and seven or older than seven. If that happens, we won't automatically automatically decide to prosecute the person. The hunter will be provided an opportunity to 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 provide a report or to submit uh submit a report with a motivation of what were the characteristics that he or she saw that made him make a decision that that was a huntable seven-year-old male. Um and based on that information, a decision then can that can be taken, whether that's a um a realistic um representation or and that is why we also recommend in the norms and standards that a trial camera um um is is recommended um to be used to assist the hunter in the assessment of the age. So it's not an automatic immediate prosecution. There is an opportunity for the hunter to make a representation. But there is also an obligation on the hunter to take the necessary um measures to provide proof, this and this and this is what I have been looking at. So we do make provision for that. Um what will happen to the trophies? Um in a case where a hunter could um justify why his decision was to hunt this particular leopard and it's accepted by the issuing authority, then that trophy can be um the issuing authority may then decide and there's no prosecution and there's no reason to confiscate the trophy. Obviously, if it's there's clearly no sufficient evidence to justify the shooting or the hunting of a particular leopard, especially if it's a female away underage, the issuing authority can take a decision to confiscate the trophy. But that will be the decision of the issuing authority of the um um enforcement official. And most of the time, they do concur with the prosecutor, the the um uh state prosecutors. So I cannot say now what will happen to the trophies. The um that that depends on the discussions and and the um um the circumstances around each individual hunt. And then about the court ruling, very specifically, are we going to include welfare matters in the draft norms and standards? Um and the response at this stage is um the the ruling, the court ruling in two thousand and nineteen acknowledged that we do not have the regulatory mandate at this point in time to regulate welfare in our legislation. So at this moment, if we implement these norms and standards under the current NEMBA, we do not have a mandate to include include provisions in the norms and standards that are regulatory of nature and that relates to welfare. However, we are compelled to take welfare into consideration when we make decisions. For example, when it when the decision comes to um allocating quotas, um decision um on on where to allocate the quotas, the leopard hunting zones. So if any of the decision-making before issuing the permit has welfare implications, that is the 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 those implications must be considered. But in regulating welfare at this stage, we do not have a mandate, so it won't be included in this document. I think it will it's it um links up with another question, whether we will be linking it to the recommendations of the High Level Panel. Yes, as soon as we have promulgated the or as soon as the NEMLA bill, the amendments to um other environmental legislation and also NEMBA where we included the well-being clause. As soon as that bill is promulgated and we have the mandate to start regulating welfare or the well-being of animals, we will start including regulatory provisions in our legislation relating to welfare. So I hope I've made, I've been able to clarify the difference between considering welfare in decision-making and actually regulating welfare in our legislation and at what point we will be able to do that. Um Audrey's comments, um you you had a you your comment on that there was not consent. Um, Audrey's comments, um, you, you had a, you, your comment on that there was not consensus on the population status. And why is a more cautious approach um not considered? Um, the data that is um collected or gathered at the moment in terms of the leopard monitoring program. Um, talks to population trends and it doesn't, I mean, I'm not sure if I misunderstood the question. But the pro- the monitoring program does not aim to provide population status information because that's very difficult to do. So it looks at specific populations. And whether the population, a particular population over a three-year period is increasing or decreasing or remaining stable. And being the decision to allocate a quota. In that particular leopard hunting zone where that population occurs depends on whether that population is. Stable to increasing or not increasing. So just to give an example, over the, um, in twenty eighteen and nineteen. Um, if I have the numbers correctly, because I, I um didn't have time through collating all the comments to veri- verify the dates. But there were, there was a two-year period, um, where we have, where only um seven quotas were allocated. Um, so that is a very cautious approach. I think it's less than what we have hunted in previous years before the monitoring program um came into place. And the cautious approach was also when the monitoring program started for two years, no permits were issued for trophy hunting of leopard. Um, but if there's more, more um areas on scientific information that is not um corresponding. Then we can, we will, we will gladly um await more in- input on that. Then, Fozos comments, um, okay, there wasn't a specif- a specific question there that I would need to answer now. We will be waiting for the written uh representations. And then, um, Yohan from, Xian from Pumalanga Tourism and Parks Agency, um, there was a number of comments there, um. We do take knowledge of the support for the Leopard Monitoring Program. Um, I just want to indicate that it's no lo- it was established by Pantera. And it's a good program and it has wide support. Um, but it's no longer run by Pantera anymore. It's now a joint program with initiatives from other NGOs, from the um wildlife industry. So hopefully, um, we will be able to get more support for the, uh, for, for that program. What you said to implement it, it's costless, expensive, that is very true. And that is why, um, Sambi, for example, will be relying on private partnerships to continue with it and to expand the programs. Have more monitoring sites in the same provinces and expand it to other provinces. What they have done was to establish guidelines for the monitoring program, how to do it, how to collect the data. What they want to make sure is that whoever participates in the program collects the data in the same manner so that it's a consistent, so that there's consistency. Um, there was a specific question on the minimum size of the hunting area, whether it can be different between provinces? Yes, it can be. That's why we very specifically didn't want to provide a minimum size in the norms and standards. Because the size for the hunting of specific animals like lion and leopard and buffalo. Most of the times are set in provincial legislation. And it's not necessarily the same throughout all nine provinces' ordinances. So that's why we make provision that it's either determined in the provincial ordinance. Or if there isn't a minimum size in the province's ordinance, the issuing authority can determine a minimum size. So we don't, we didn't want to prescribe a minimum size because then that would be um across the board. And it's not always practical for one size fits all in terms of hunting sizes when it comes to hunting areas. I do agree with your comment on, on the image and, and the, the, the scale. I think that's something that we will be able to amend. It wouldn't affect anybody um negatively. So I think it's something that will be relatively easy for us to, to, to change and we will definitely look at that. And I think I have um spoken to your comment on the accuracy of um the judgment of the males of seven years and older. Um, I have responded to that one. Um, so I think. There's one question that Yohan asked that I missed and you requested better guidelines and I missed the rest of that. So there's a specific question that you, Yohan, you want a question on that I haven't responded to. You can maybe just post it in the comment box. Or you can send me, or you can see included in written um comments that will go to the um. To the, to the legislator, to the portfolio committee. So I think, Chair, those are the comments, um, the, the, the oral questions that I've responded to. I just quickly want to touch on two uh comments on the comment boxes that I've picked up. I don't know if there um more has been incoming. Um, Audrey asked a question, will the norms and standards be aligned with the recommendations by the high-level panel? Released by the, to be released by the minister? Um, yes, um, it will be, but it's a, it's a process that will take place. So, um, there will be alignment with legislation with uh the recommendations. At this stage, I can't indicate um how that alignment will take place. Um, because the, the report has not been released, so there is some consultation and, and um assessments that need to take place. Um, but what I can indicate at this stage is that these norms and standards are at the final stages of approval and it's implemented. So what is likely to happen over time is if there are other norms and standards that we do need to develop. It can be developed and these norms and standards, the provisions of these norms and standards can be incorporated into that broader document if that is the way forward. So, um, yes, it's, it's the, the recommendations will definitely not be ignored. They will be considered and we will see how we can do that alignment. And then Stephen from, um, Charza, um, asked whether the proposed norms and standards have been subjected to the socio-economic impact assessment. That is requirement by presidency's of, um, office. Uh, we have done an initial assessment, um, that we are required to do before we start developing it. Um, we are, we have initiated the process to do the final assessment. We haven't completed that. Um, but we will make sure that we have done that and have the sign off from the president's, uh, presidency's um office. Before we implement the norms and standards. So we know that that is a requirement. Um, there's no prescription in terms of when it must be done. So we do try to do it concurrently and as long as it's signed off by the time that we publish it in the Gazette for implementation. Um, Chair, I just want to see, um, on the WhatsApp. Um, on the WhatsApp that I received from Charlotte, if there's anything that I've missed there. Stephen made a comment on the population in Gauteng between Hackwood, Brutusquem and Forwards, Lansiria. Um, I'm not sure, the, the comment that I made is that it's not that there's no leopard in Gauteng. But those that are in Gauteng may be a population with a territory overlapping between Gauteng and Pumalanga or Gauteng and Northwest. So I'm not sure whether Stephen was referring to Gauteng has its own population that has a territory only in Gauteng. And it's not overlapping with other provinces. And then also Stephen made a comment on the flawle- on, on the NDF, the non-determinant finding, um, that is flawed. I think, um, that is something that can be acknowledged. And that is why, um, an updated non-determinant finding has not been published yet. Because the data that has been coming out of the monitoring program that started soon after the two thousand and fifteen NDF was. And that's why I refer to it as a preliminary NDF, although there was public um participation or stakeholder participation going into that process. Um, the, the monitoring data that have been gathered over the past, say, four years, um, um, through the monitoring program. Will be used to update the information in the NDF and it's very likely or very possible. That the final NDF outcome may be different or substantially different to the two thousand and fifteen NDF. So I just want to acknowledge that comment, um, that it, it, there, there will likely be differences. Um, then there's one last one. Okay, that's the one of this year. Chair, I think, I hope I've touched on everything. I'm not sure there's any other questions in the comment box that I have missed. That is specifically aimed to the department and to um clarify something relating to the draft norms and standards. Thank you, Honorable Chair and Members. Thank you very much for your patience and um indulging us or providing us time to respond to all the questions.
Yeah, I believe as she was responding, um. He was also taking note of the questions that were sent by Facebook. So, eh. For, eh. I step into, to the way forward, I want to check if there are any follow-up questions. But usually I wouldn't give people for, to make follow-up, but for the interest of the. The, 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 the item, eh, which we are busy with, I would like to check if there are others that will want to make follow-up. Questions around the response by eh, Miss Boschow.
Yes, Chair, we do have Ashley from EWT.
Yeah, Ashley. Yeah, can you come in?
Thank you very much, Chair, for the opportunity just to raise a couple of points in response to what, um, MacDell has just raised now. And MacDell, thank you very much for the explanations. Um, just two points that we did want to raise and follow up to them. Uh, firstly is on, uh, on the response to how we respond to offences. Um, in the two thousand and seventeen norms and standards, there was a lot more detail on the considerations to be taken into account. Um, and the, the sanctions or penalties that may be imposed where hunting didn't take place in terms of the norms and standards. Now, while we recognise the, the link between the norms and standards, NEMBA and the TOPS regulations. We do feel very strongly that we need to be a bit broader in the possible sanctions that may be applied. And have the, that process be more expressed or explicit through the norms and standards. What we would like to prevent is an escalation in illegal hunting. Um, or, or non-disclosures where accidents happen. So. I think consideration must be given to, to, like I said, that carrot and stick approach. Um, how do we bring people under. Um, or within the realm of lawful activities? Um, and what do we do where illegal activities or unlawful activities take place? And, and those penalties should be broader than, than just the fine and or jail time. That, um, or jail sentence that NEMBA prescribes as well as the TOPS regulations prescribe. Um, so we do feel very strongly that more guidance is required in the norms and standards around what happens where. Um, illegal activities or activities that are contrary to the provisions of the norms and standards take place. Um, while recognising that it, it would also constitute a breach, um. Of permit conditions, which, which constitutes uh its own offence in terms of section one oh one of NEMBA. Um, so we would really urge government to consider that, um, and, and we will be fleshing this out in more detail in our comments. The second point around processes is noted, and we obviously don't want to burden down uh legislation and we also recognise that amendments to legislation are. Sorry, there was an interesting question from Steph- Stephen. I'll, I'll respond to that after this. Um, there was a point on, on processes not being included in norms and standards. And what we just wanted to address here is to ensure transparency through the process. If the norms and standards, uh, you're prescribed training or they prescribe reporting that there's very, very clear guidance to the client. Uh, or to the users of the norms and standards and what is expected of them. Um, so what we, what we would ask for is that if the processes aren't being, aren't going to be included in the norms and standards. That there's a cross-reference to where those processes may be clearly identified. Um, we, we ha- feel very, we feel like we have to note that the processes and legislation in South Africa is not clear to many people. Um, and every effort should be made to clarify processes and procedures. Um, and Chair, just with your indulgence in response to Stephen's question on what on earth penalties are broader than fines and jail time. Um, Stephen, if you do refer yourself to section or regulation four seven of the two thousand and seventeen regulations, that's what we're referencing here. Um, so there's a number of administrative penalties that can be included in addition to criminal penalties. And we are asking that we're broader in this approach than, um, than just balancing or focusing on criminal penalties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other stakeholders which want to make follow-up questions? Is there any stakeholder that has raised, eh, their hands, Charlotte?
Uh, no, Chairperson, we can proceed. Thank you.
Miss Boschow? There is anything that you can respond now, follow-up questions, um, Ashley?
Thanks, Chair. Um, no, there's not something I can really specifically comment to that, um, except to say that we take note of the comments. And we will see, um, I, I, we will see how we will address. I take note that it, it must be clear where we can find it. I think we will, we will certainly pay attention to that. Um, but I can't indicate at the moment exactly how we will do it, but we will make sure that what needs to be known is available in one way or the other. Um, thank you, Chair.
No, no, thanks. Um. Uh, legally, eh, can you take a bite also? Pumla? Miss Pumla? She is connected, Charlotte?
Yes, Chair, she is connected. I'll check what is the problem.
Yeah, I want to check if, eh, we are not moving out of, eh. We are not out of order in terms of the legality of this, eh, public hearing. But nev- nev- nevertheless, eh, I think in terms of the way forward, already, eh, Umiss Boschow was. Tugging most of the things that we need to expect from, eh, this, eh, draft public hearing. Eh, we, we have, eh, we, we are still going to consolidate all the inputs. So we will advise all the stakeholders, I have indicated already, that, eh. Put your submission in black and white and send it to, eh, Charlotte, as I have indicated. So we'll consolidate everything and take it to the department. But we, eh, then appreciate and thanks for all the stakeholders that has participated in this, eh. Eh, usual, eh, public hearing, eh, for the norms and standard for the trophy hunting of leopard. Eh, I will just want to check if there are any announcements before I close the meeting.
Eh, to the Chairperson. Eh, announcement is, eh, to remind our stakeholders that they can send through their written submission by the ninth February twenty twenty-one. Eh, in case there are changes, we'll communicate to them. Thank you, Chair.
No, thanks. Eh, honour for nine February twenty twenty-one.
Chairperson?
Yes.
Yes, it's Andres Mazan.
Yes, Andres?
Yes, Chairperson, I was communicating with Miss Pumla as be the legal advisor.
Yes.
She said, she said to me that she, she has been following. It is just that she had a nec- a connectivity problem. But everything went well, as per the statutes.
No, eh, thanks.
Thank you.
I think, eh, we appreciate if we are still moving on the right direction. It is important that legal must always advise our activity. Um, I then, eh, our stakeholders, honourable members. All people present here appreciate for a present. Then I declare this meeting officially closed.
Thank you, Chair. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Chair. Goodbye.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Chair. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye, Kaya.
Bye, Kaya.
Madam? Madam Chirwan?
Yes, how are you, Mr. Mazan?
I'm all right. Eh, uh, honourable members gone. Are we just the two?
No, we still have other, eh, colleagues who are there and other stakeholders.
Oh, no, I wanted to, to say thank you very much for your diligence in executing your responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you.